Like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the regular business meeting of the Board of School Trustees, held on this April twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five date. It's officially six P M. If we could all please rise, we'll have Mr. Bassler lead us into pledge allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item two point oh one, patrons registered to comment on educational issues. We do have a individual registered to speak tonight. Kelly Skarhoffman, if you would like to come forward. Ms. Hoffman, before you begin, I just want to remind you that's board policy. You have three minutes. Ms. Bazin will keep timer. She's not being rude. She's looking at the timer and she'll warn you with thirty seconds left, okay? Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Terrell, members of the board. My name is Kelly Skarhoffman and I work at Lake Street Elementary. I'm here to talk about the interventionist position in our district. Elementary interventionists in Crown Point work with every grade level K through five. We're in charge of offering tier two instruction, which means no more than six students in a group, as well as tier three instruction, which is no more than two students in a group. We also do this in two different subjects, E L A and math. At Lake Street, we get a forty minute window to service the high need students who do not have I E Ps. We do this five days a week. Some of our responsibilities include keeping track of academic data, attending case conferences and file reviews, grade level data meetings, administering standardized tests, attending district professional developments, arrival and dismissal duty, filling in for classroom teachers, and so much more. The role of interventionist must be filled by a licensed teacher. However, the role does not offer a teacher contract. The role of an elementary interventionist is similar to that of an exceptional education teacher. One difference is that the E E teacher follows an I E P and must meet a certain amount of instructional minutes by law. That teacher is also in charge of writing the said I E P as well as implementing it. This role requires an additional certification on top of holding a current educator license. These roles are contracted by the district. Another role that is similar to that of an interventionist is the high ability teacher. We have a high ability program at the elementary level where a licensed teacher goes to one elementary school two days a week. They meet with every grade level K to five for thirty to forty minutes for E L A, then the next day they do the same for math. Then the third and fourth day they go to a different elementary school and follow the same schedule. Then on Friday, they get an entire day for collaboration and planning. They don't have to attend file reviews or case conferences because the students they work with are exceeding in their grade level work. There is no other certification required beyond a current educator license. This role is also offered a teacher contract. At Lake Street, our turnover rate for the interventionist position is high. Don't you want teachers who are working with some of our neediest students to stay in that position each year? Wouldn't it be great if those students who need so much help had a teacher who knew them right at the beginning of the school year? Someone who already knows their strengths and weaknesses and even their life outside of school? Someone who knows how those students learn and can differentiate the lessons to fit that type of learner from day one? I believe that offering a contract for this position would decrease the turnover rate, which could ultimately affect student success and retain highly qualified teachers in this important role. I also think that it's, it's my time up. I also think it's worth mentioning that Crown Point is the only district in the area that does not offer a contract to their interventionists. I reach out to Dunland, Velpo, Maryville, and Hammond, and all of their interventionists are under contract. I know this can't happen overnight. However, if, when the referendum passes, my hope is that the board and admin will have a discussion and seriously consider offering a teacher contract to the interventionists in our district, a solution that not only helps the interventionists be successful, but most importantly, the students be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item three, consent agenda. Dr. Terrell?
Thank you. For your consideration this evening, we have three point zero one, the regular business meeting minutes, and then also four twenty three executive session minutes. Three point zero two, the personnel agenda as listed in your board docs. Three point zero three, the voucher registered checks that are listed as well, that we ask for your approval this evening.
You've heard the recommendation of Dr. Terrell for the consent agenda. Three point oh one, regular business meeting minutes of March seventeenth, two thousand twenty five, and approval of the executive session minutes, April twenty third, two thousand twenty five. Three point oh two, the personal agenda, and three point oh three voucher register check numbers one seven five nine eight eight to one seven six three eight three, and vouchers number three zero two four eight three two three zero three five eight five. May I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Bazin?
Second.
Second by Mr. Angel. Are there any questions or comments for Dr. Terrell? If there be no questions or comments, we'll take a move to take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Nays? Vote carries five zero. Moving on to action items for today's board meeting, four point oh one, textbook and resource adoption. Mrs. Ramirez?
Thank you, Mr. President and board members. I'm here tonight to request that the board approve the adoption of the following curricula for use beginning in twenty five, twenty six school year. These curricular resources will support English Language Arts, Mathematics, Family and Consumer Science, and Computer Science at the middle school level. And then we have two requests that will impact our high school, which will be specific to Spanish levels one through three and A P Latin, and those are listed for you. So it is the recommendation of the administration that the school board approve these curricular resources for adoption in twenty five, twenty six.
You've heard the recommendation of the administration to approve the curricular resources for adoption for use beginning in two thousand twenty five and twenty six. May I have a motion? So moved. So moved by Mr. Warning. Second by Ms. Bazin. Are there any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Ramirez, is this a scholastic press publisher? We use them before, do you know?
For the E L L, E N L courses?
For what we're looking at here?
Yes. That is the scholastic that's used. It's also used in art class, same publisher that we've used at the high school, and it's used sporadically, you know, throughout elementary as well.
So previously?
Correct.
We're just kind of like?
This is new for the E N L class, but it is a vendor that we have worked with before in terms of the publisher, yes. Yep, thank you for that question.
Any other questions? Move to a vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? The ayes carry five zero. Action item four point oh two, textbook and resource purchase. Mrs. Ramirez?
Thank you, Mr. President and board members. I am also here today to request that the board approve the purchase of the following curricula for Amplify E L A, Linko for Spanish, which will be at the high school, and Reveal and Alex Mathematics, which will be at the middle school, again, starting in the twenty five, twenty six school year. You will see an analysis of kind of what these curricula support, as well as then the associated costs. And it is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the purchase of Amplify E L A for middle school, Linko Spanish for middle school, for high school, my apologies, and Reveal and Alex for middle school mathematics, starting in the twenty five, twenty six school year, and this is at a price of eight hundred and forty seven thousand, five hundred and eighty three dollars and ninety eight cents.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramirez. You heard the recommendation of the administration for the purchase of Amplify E L A, Linko Spanish for the high school, and Reveal and Alex Mathematics for use beginning in two thousand twenty five and twenty, two thousand twenty six at eight hundred forty seven thousand, five hundred eighty three dollars and ninety eight cents. May I have a motion? So moved. So moved by Mr. Angel?
A second.
And second by Mr. Bassler. Are there any questions or comments?
Same, same question is for the last adoption. We've worked with these folks before?
Um, Amplify will be similar to, they package C K L A, which is what is used at the elementary. However, Amplify is its own publisher, so it's slightly different than what is used at the elementary level. Linko is a new partnership for us, and Reveal and Alex is a new partnership for us with those publishers.
So this has been something in the past. I don't know if this, it's not a specific question to you.
Sure.
Mrs. Ramirez, but something in the past that would have been textbook rental?
Correct. Yes, exactly. Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move to a vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Vote carries five zero. Action item four point oh three, approval to apply for and receive grant funds from the I D O E, Office of Special Education Behavior Grant. Mrs. Paskus?
Good evening, President Smith, members of the board. Tonight, we come to you seeking approval for application and receipt of the Office of Special Education's Behavior Grant Funds of twenty thousand, seven hundred eighteen and eighty three cents. This will allow us to train three additional staff members as C P I trainers and allow us to target some of our special populations with those trainers.
Thank you, Ms. Paskus. You heard the recommendation to, of the administration to apply for and receive the I D O E Office of Special Education Behavior Grant Funds of twenty thousand, seven hundred eighteen dollars and eighty three cents for the two thousand twenty five and two thousand twenty six school year. May I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Bassler? Second by Ms. Bazin. Are there any questions or comments?
What, which, Heather, what's your feeling? It's competitive. What's our chances?
Well, I may already know the outcome.
Oh.
There were a hundred and sixty applicants and fifty recipients. So we were one out of fifty. Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Good news. All right. Well, are there any other questions or comments? Move to a vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? The vote carries five zero. Action item four point oh four, policy update, second reading and approval. Mr. Keewa?
Thank you, Mr. President and board members. The use of artificial intelligence, as we spoke at our last board meeting. It's been one of the fascinating grow, growing uses of technology in recent years. We discussed the adoption of an A I policy for the Crown Point Community School Corporation in our last month's meeting, as I requested a first reading. As we know, this is a tool many students and teachers are aware of. The recommended policy, I S B A fifty three thirty five, allows A I to be addressed in our current academic policies. Tonight, we ask the board to waive the second reading and approve policy fifty three thirty five as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Keewa. You've heard the recommendation, administration, to waive the second reading and approve policy five three three five as presented. May I have a motion? So moved by Ms. Bazin? Second? Second by Mr. Angel. Are there any questions, thoughts, or comments? I suppose, Mr. Keewa?
I think I held off my question last month, and that is, where do we balance or draw the line between A I being a mechanism that is the future for kids and students to learn versus actually doing the work for students? And has there been thought about this in discussion?
Quite, yeah, quite a bit of thought, I'm sure. Mark or Sabrina, and/or any number of our curriculum folks will, will happy, be happy to comment.
Pretty timely question today. At seven o'clock, the directors of secondary and elementary, Mr. Harden, myself, and all of our blended instructionalized specialists met. There is some digital literacy grants that are out there by the state, and the conversation around it, and we've been piloting some A I things, but we really feel like our teachers and our staff need to be really comfortable in how they use it to enhance their instruction, and then possibly opening it up into the students and how they're using it. So we really are trying to find some funding to work with some platforms that we can all be agreeable upon, and then work with the P D of our, of our instructional staff to then be able to move that out to the rest of the students, because this is the world we live in, and it's going to be here. So we don't want to sit on our hands, but we don't, this is one you probably don't want to be maybe the first one in line either, because things changing so rapidly. So we do have a plan and we are working on it, and as of today, we were talking about that.
Makes sense. Thank you, Mr. Keewa. Are there any follow up questions or comments? All right, we'll move to a vote. I believe this does need to, yes, it does. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays? The ayes carry four zero, or five zero, excuse me. Action item four point oh five, banking service provider, Mr. Reese.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. And since I came here in two thousand six, we have not looked at changing our banking services provider. Along with that, anybody in the office can't remember the last time we did change when it wasn't a bank takeover. So we decided, given the current situation, we were interested in doing an R F P for banking services to see what the market looked like. With that, we received five proposals. All were fairly competitive. The, in fact, the top two choices came down to a difference in total of about eighty thousand dollars. So we were happy with the quality of responses we received. Part of the agreement, we're also including the option for our other ten locations, the individual buildings with their E C A accounts. If they'd like to participate with these interest rates, we're going to cover all the fees for them. If they would like to join us, they don't know why they wouldn't, but they may, we're going to leave that up to their, their choice to do that. So with that, compared to what we're currently doing, we're anticipating this generating about a quarter million dollars additional in interest income. That interest income, at this point, is going into our education fund. So with that, we're recommending a three year agreement with First Merchants Bank for our banking services.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. You've heard the recommendation of the administration for approval of the three year agreement with First Merchants Bank for our banking services. May I have a motion? So moved. So moved by Mr. Angel? And second by Ms. Bazin. Are there any questions or comments?
So if I heard you correctly, that means that the individual schools can have their individual providers?
As they currently do, yes.
So we're not making a stipulation that they should go with First Merchants Bank?
No, but many of the situations currently, the, the individual buildings are not earning very much in interest. And for that, they're not paying any fees. With this, they'll be earning the same interest rate we earn with the, the, the number of assets we have. They wouldn't be able to get, gather this interest rate, and we're going to cover all their fees for them as well.
So it'd be advantageous for them to do this?
I would think so, but we're not going to mandate that to them. Let them make their own decisions.
Any other questions or comments? Move to a vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Vote carries five zero. Action item four point oh six, additional architectural services, twenty twenty one projects. Mr. Reese?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Similar to last month where you approved the construction management services for the renovations being done at the transportation center this summer. This is the amendment for architectural services for that same project. It's with Gibraltar Design who's handled the, all of our projects here this past four years. So with that, we're recommending this approval of this amendment for Gibraltar Design in the amount of a hundred and forty seven thousand.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. You've heard the recommendation of the administration for approval of the amendment for the Gibraltar Design in the amount of a hundred and forty seven thousand dollars? May I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, may I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Warning?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bassler. Are there any questions or comments? If there be no questions or comments, we'll move the matter to a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? Vote carries five zero. Action item four point oh seven, Optum Agreement, Walgreens Class Action Lawsuit. Back to you, Mr. Reese.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the agreement with Optum to provide services for us in perfecting our claim in the Walgreens Pharmaceutical Settlement. With that, we're anticipating receiving a little under one point eight million dollars as part of the settlement we were identified. But with it, Optum has to gather up all that information that needs, needs to be submitted. So with that, we're asking for your approval, recommending your approval of the class action agreement with Optum for the Walgreens Class Action Settlement.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. You heard the recommendation of the administration approving the class action service agreement with Optum for the Walgreens Class Action Settlement. May I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Bassler? Second by Ms. Bazin. Are there any questions or comments?
Just make the comment to the administration that these things may come across a count that had a ninety five percent chance of being acted upon, but there's still that five percent that gets slipped through cracks.
Well said. Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, move to a vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? Vote carries five zero. Action item four point zero eight, Support Service Center Improvements. Back to you, Mr. Reese. Thank you, Mr. Reese. You heard the recommendation of the administration that contracts be awarded to Doppler Construction in the amount of one hundred fifty nine thousand, nine hundred seventy six dollars for renovations and improvements to the Support Service Center. May I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Angel? Second by Ms. Bazin. Are there any questions or comments?
How, how old is that building? Anybody know?
Way old. I'm going to have to get back to you on that one.
Was it used for something before we used it, though?
Yes.
Trying, just, anybody? I'm, I'm just curious at this point.
It was either an engineering company or a manufacturing company. I can't think of which one, because that was right next to me, right down from A and B. I'm sure someone will get us that information.
Well, it's not.
I thought it was a manufacturing facility.
I'm just more curious of what it used to be.
If I can add, this is really exciting, because once this building is done, every facility in Crown Point Schools will have been updated and ready to go. So we're in a really good spot. Exciting.
We have used them for smaller projects within the corporation.
Yeah, it's great news. Long time coming with these buildings and these improvements, so very excited to have these projects wrap up. With that being said, we can move to a vote unless there's other questions or comments. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? Vote carries five zero. Item five, information recognition items, super tennis discussion groups. Mr. Angel, anything? Nothing from Winfield. Do we have her, Ms. Bazin? Considerate? You drew the straw? Thank you, Ms. Bazin. I know they can't hear you. I know she said that they were talking about the referendum and everything that applies to the referendum, so thank you for covering it. Mr. Bassler from Crown Point?
Nothing new in Crown Point. We meet next week.
Excellent. Just thank you all for covering those hearings. All right, moving on to item five point oh two, Director of Grants Assessments, Mr. Harden.
Good evening, President Smith, members of the board. I want to comment a couple of things. One assessment thing and a couple of grants that are coming up that we will not be, will actually submit before you have an opportunity to approve them. First of all, we are in the midst of I M testing, which is our alternative education testing for our intense special needs students, as well as our I Learn assessment place. I want to just give you some percentages. We started with I M on March thirty first, and we give two hundred thirty seven I M tests, and these are all done individually to our students. And as of Friday, we were at sixty eight point four percent complete on that. I Learn, we give a total of nineteen thousand, six hundred and ninety six assessments to grades three through eight. And as of Friday, we were at forty three point five percent complete. We did try to delay testing a little bit, get more instruction in before we started the testing this year. Therefore, we are half, halfway point in the testing window right now. And then we do I Learn Biology, and this is for any student that's taking biology, and that can include high school students as well as grade eight students. And currently, we are at thirty one point six percent of our students that have completed that, and there's a total of two thousand two hundred and seven tests that that can be given. So it gives you a little bit of update of our I Learn, I M testing. We actually will be completed in a couple of weeks, and then we start A P testing will be coming on board, actually, within the next, next week or beginning of May. Two grants that are going to be coming, one's already been alluded to. Mark talked about it, was the Digital Learning Grant. This is due on the sixteenth of, of April, of May, excuse me, and we'll be meeting, of course, on the nineteenth for approval, and I'll be bringing that. This is a digital grant that we are targeting, A I and professional development, and we're in the works, as Mark stated, as to what, what exactly that's going to look like for us to build our capacity in, with A I, with our teachers and our students. The maximum for this is fifty thousand dollars. Okay, so that's what we're, we are looking at. And I believe, from what we can tell, and Mark or someone else can correct me, this is kind of like a one time startup grant. It's not like it's going to be continual, so we have a decision to make as far as whether we put it towards a software or subscriptions, or whether we target professional development, or do we do a combination of both as we move forward with this. The second one is a third year that we've been bringing to you the Competitive Robotics Grant. And this is a grant that really sust, sust, is helpful for all of our schools, elementary through the high school, for the robotics teams. And it's a really hefty grant. We can actually apply for up to a hundred thousand dollars. And we will, working through that with all of our coaches right now at all the different levels. And so I will be bringing you that one. This will be a third time that we've gone through this. We're happy that the state is continuing to fund the robotics grant. So grants assessment. Questions for anyone? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harden. Moving on to item four point zero three, Director of Secondary Education. Mrs. Ramirez?
Thank you, Mr. President and board members. I would like to highlight an event that took place at Crown Point High School last week. On Thursday, we hosted a multicultural fair. This is the second multicultural fair that's been held here in Crown Point Community School Corporation. And I just want to give a really big thank you to Anna Retzlaaf, who is our E L L District Specialist, along with our E L L teachers of record and our paraprofessionals and interventionists who support our E L Ls. Our multilingual learner students were really well represented. We had countries represented and cultures represented from Moldova to the Ukraine, to Poland, Mexico, Colombia, India. We had two students from Lake Street who did a traditional Punjabi dance, which was really just such a great celebration. So there was lots of food. There was a lot of sharing of culture. There were some crafts. So it was really very well attended. I'm very thankful to all of the central office staff who were able to attend, administrators, both the district and building level, and to our teachers. So really just a great event, and I want to give them a shout out for all the hard work that it took, and it's such a representation of our cultural diversity here within Crown Point Community School. So it was a really great event to attend. And the other thing I want to just do, I know, is we're kind of wrapping up the school year, and we've got the last month plus on our minds. I was in a district curriculum and instruction meeting this afternoon, and I looked around the table, and this is honest to goodness, the truth. And I just thought about like the expertise that is sitting around that table and the teamwork that it really takes to do what we do every day, and that we learn from each other. We have to be flexible. We don't always know all of the answers, but we can find somebody who does. And so I was just really grateful to sit in that meeting and to think about who I get to work with every day and what we get to do every day for our community and for our students. And along with that, just really recognizing that it's not just those of us who are in this meeting this morning, or this afternoon, but rather our paraprofessionals interventionists who we celebrated earlier in April, our assistant principals who we celebrated in April. We have National Principals Day. They only get a day, not a week, I guess. So that's coming up on May first. And then we have Educator Appreciation Week next week, and so we really want to view everybody that services our students and makes our community and our school corporation what it is next week. And I know that Dr. Terrell has done a phenomenal job of rebranding that name of Teacher Appreciation Week to Educator Appreciation Week, because it really is. And I know that Dr. Terrell has done a phenomenal job of rebranding that name of Teacher Appreciation Week to Educator Appreciation Week, because it really is, um, all hands on deck, and we all do what we think is best for students on a daily basis. So it was a really nice moment. I think that there are, you know, there are a lot of meetings that we're in, and it was a good moment to just think about the pride that I have and that I know we have in each other. So, thank you for letting me share that.
Thank you, Mrs. Mary Harrison. Item five point zero four, Director of Exceptional Education, Mrs. Peskis.
Good evening. So we also had an exciting event last Wednesday. It's kind of the beginning of our end of the year events. We had our annual transition fair, and that is called the Transition Fair because when students, uh, with IEPs during their fourteenth, uh, birthday year, we have to start designing a special part of their IEP that focuses on their life after, um, high school and what that looks like for them, and make sure we're, um, guiding them down that path. So last Wednesday night at the high school, um, our transition coordinator, Marissa Dubstad, um, had sixty-seven organizations there, thirty student volunteers that helped with setup. There were two hundred thirty students and families that came through. Um, and then we also wanted to thank Jel Sosimos. They donated pizzas for all of those vendor vendors and volunteers. So it was a success. There were some of you there. I know it was a, a night where there were a lot of things going on, so we appreciate, um, anyone who stopped by. May fourteenth is our annual best day of the year, Unified Game Day. We'd love to have you. We'll be at Crown Point High School from ten to one. Um, this is where all of our, um, students in applied skills and their peer buddies participate in track and field events. Uh, we have an exciting new partnership this year. We're working with the high school's Athletic Leadership Council, and they're gonna help run all of our events. So we're looking forward to that. And then as we do move into, um, kind of our Educator Appreciation Week next week, I wanted to thank two people that kind of probably fall through the cracks a little bit because they're not traditional teachers. But we have two, um, board certified behavior analysts on staff as our behavior specialists. Laura Wade and Emily Toth just do a fabulous job, kind of running all around, supporting, um, student needs when staff call on them or administrators call on them, and so I just wanted to give them a shout out.
Thank you, Ms. Peskis. Appreciate it. Moving on to item five point zero five, Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Dean Fermi.
Thank you, Mr. President, Board Members. Um, there have been a lot of events since the last board meeting, and I'm gonna point out, uh, one on April fifteenth, the Math Bowl that was held at Colonel Wheeler for all our elementary students. What amazing job, and a, a big thank you to all the teachers and staff and parents and students that were involved in that. The gym is packed. Um, couldn't fit another person in there. All of us adults sit there and feel shame that we can't do these math problems that are going up there. Um, but, you know, it was just, it was a really great event. Jerry Ross pulled it off on the last question, and they went away with, as the Orange Champions. Um, Mac repeated as the Red Division Champions, as they do every year. There's a reason, but again, another championship for Mac. And, uh, so it was just a great night, and it's, it's really great to see that. And again, a big thank you for everyone puts their time into that. Couple upcoming events. Dr. Kachina, not being here tonight, wanted me to remind you that on Monday night at the Crown Point High School Stadium, football stadium, uh, music teachers will be having, uh, second grade hosting the folk dancing with their parents. And you guys are welcome to come on in there on the field and do all your favorites. The classics will be handled there, I'm sure. Dr. Cheryl's asking for people to come.
Danielle's gonna be there representing.
Another event coming up on May seventh, the, uh, Class of Two Thousand Twenty-Five Military Stole Ceremony out in front of the school, uh, right there in the Circle Drive. We have more, um, students enlisted than we've ever had. I think it's up to about fifteen. There's quite a few different of our military, um, units that are be represented there that night. It's a great ceremony for those kids to get those stoles that they will be able to wear. It is May seventh at one P M. It's right out there in the front, and there's plenty of chairs. If, yeah, I've been RSVP'd, there's plenty of spots for people to sit. And then this is my last comment is that, um, just a couple of events that Mrs. Ramirez and Mrs. Peskis mentioned, the multicultural fair and the transition fair, uh, great nights, and, and I've been going to those every year for several years, and they just have grown and grown. And it was just such a pleasure to see, like, so many community members at the transition fair and the parents there. We had more. We just had a bigger crowd than we've had ever. And then the multicultural fair, boy, they really upped their game this year with the costumes and food and music, and it was just like, I think I walked in with Mr. Marsnick. He goes, I feel like I'm walking into Pierogi Fest with all the music and everything. It's just so festive in there. Um, so it was just a great night. And the multicultural night, uh, I think, uh, I was there. I went, I could see a baseball game, unified track, multicultural, and boys volleyball. I got it all in one night. So it was just a lot of things happening, and just a big thank you for everybody that's involved in those things. So it kind of reminds me why we do all these things that we do. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dean Fermi. Moving on to item five point zero six, Chief Human Resource Officer, Mr. Keewee.
Thank you, Mr. President and Board Members. Speaking of May seventh, uh, next week, as many of you know, May is the month where Teacher Appreciation Week, Day, Month is, is celebrated. Uh, in Crown Point, though, we make a point, uh, to title this Educate, Education Appreciation Day, because we believe that it's not just our educators or teachers, which are very, very important, but there are so many individuals that play key roles, uh, in supporting our students, um, helping, you know, raise them and, and achieve all their goals. So next week, uh, on May seventh in the morning, every building will be hosting and celebrating Educator Appreciation Day with a breakfast, uh, at, at their building site. So I know the Food Service Department work very hard, and I would like to thank the, uh, Dr. Terrell and, uh, all those that, that make this event possible, just to show some appreciation for all the effort everyone puts in, uh, taking care of our students.
Thank you, Mr. Keewee.
Thank you.
Moving on to item five point zero seven, Chief, Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Reese.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Mr. Keewee mentioned the, uh, employee appreciation, and our Food Service Department does provide all the foods for that. We are kind enough. We're actually, uh, getting some catering for our Food Service Department so they don't have to prepare their own appreciation luncheon. Uh, so we're, we're gonna outsource that. Uh, we're excited to, to bring them in so they can, we can celebrate them as well. So looking forward to, uh, May seventh.
Sounds like a great idea. Uh, thank you, Mr. Reese. Moving on to item five point zero eight, Director of Communications, Mrs. Allen.
Thank you and good evening. I just want to say a quick thank you to some teachers who have hosted us in their classrooms over the last month for videos and news stories and things. Um, Carrie Quinn at the high school who teaches ceramics too. If you haven't seen that Super Things video, um, their students are amazing with the things that they create in that course. And, um, let's see, Ashley Cosby. We went to Marine Sciences last week, and it's shark dissection. I made it through. I was a little nervous. I wasn't sure, but her students were so engaged, and it was just really fantastic to see the passion that she has for her job. I also recently visited all of our student journalism classes at the high school, TV, radio, newspaper, and yearbook. And it's such an amazing assortment of courses that we offer our students. We took a tour of community members around last summer, and one of the parents, as we were walking around the high school, said, man, I wish my kid understood I would pay to take these classes as an adult, because there are just so many things to choose from, and they look so fun. And she's right. Um, it's a fantastic time to visit these classrooms and see what our students do. And then today, we were at Lake Street, um, folk dancing, and by we, I mean, Mr. Keewee was folk dancing with students as a special guest host for Super Things, and he'll be out there next week at the event, um, dancing on the field with the students as well. So thanks to all of these teachers and thanks, Artie.
Thank you, Mrs. Allen. Item five point zero nine, Superintendent Schools, Dr. Turner.
So a little known fact, or maybe not so little known fact, I am not a dancer, and so Artie, uh, had to fill in on other duties as assigned. So I've got video if you'd like to see it. Uh, it will be leaked to, uh, social media soon. Uh, you'll all be impressed, I'm sure. Want to start, uh, this evening, referendum has been at the front of our minds for the last several weeks, um, and I'm amazed each and every week at the number of volunteers who show up. We've got over two thousand signs in our community, uh, community members signing up for those we, uh, sent out or prepared to send out over two thousand or right at two thousand, uh, postcards. The nights that these guys were mentioning last week were also complicated because we had so many people coming to the media center at the high school and, uh, literally four or five hours nonstop of doing postcards until we had to tell people, sorry, we have no more time for you to go. Uh, pizza's gone. You gotta move. So, uh, but want to thank, uh, CPA Michelle Bunch is here tonight. Their support for this has been huge. Our teachers are doing a great job, all after hours, by the way. Um, both with, uh, volunteering, but also with monetary gift or donation as well. Um, former ambassadors and, and, uh, parents of students, uh, the way that they've been out, and, I mean, there's a list of them. We'll talk more about this when we celebrate, uh, next Tuesday evening after we win, uh, the referendum and list of people who have just been, um, diehard ambassadors and, and people that are out there pushing for us as well. Um, current teachers, staff, admin, board members, um, need to thank Jel Sosimos and Bombers for the way that they've, uh, uh, had nights for us and made donations, and we still got time for if anybody else would like to do that as well. So again, the referendum, we just appreciate. It's a great, it's stressful, it's hard work, but it's encouraging to me to see the way our community comes around and, and supports us as well. So I, I really appreciate that. End of the year activities, um, I'll have Diana work on a list to get those out to you guys as well. Um, we'd love to have board representations, so as those fit into your schedules, we can work through that as well and let you know of all those great opportunities. It's one of those years where, or time of the year where it's a sprint, and then you sprinkle in all the referendum stuff that's on top of it, and it's, uh, it's, uh, yeah, it's a marathon sprint. So, um, appreciate you guys, though, and, and your continued involvement with that as well.
Thank you, Dr. Terrell. Diana, that would be helpful to get a list that we can circulate amongst the board members to make sure we have the events covered when possible. Uh, I tried to take notes, and it's a mess, so. It's nice to know that maybe something will be circulating, so. All right, uh, moving on to, uh, other board of business, six point oh one, uh, Mr. Waring, start with you or, or anybody?
Sure, six point oh one, just, uh, you know, Mr. Bassler's attending next Tuesday's regional meeting?
Yes.
So that, that's going on. And then as a reminder for those, and you, Mr. Bassler, as well, uh, that, uh, election result event is next Tuesday at six P M. at V O, so they're on some. So those of you that, um, just to, at land, and we'll be hopefully, hopefully collecting our votes there and celebrating the way on the referendum. So just want to make sure you guys will be aware of that.
Anybody else? Just a few dates. I think I circulated, uh, the board retreat. I think I gave everyone those dates. Everybody has that.
Are we set for May twelfth?
Yeah, May twelfth. Board retreat, and then, um, uh, just a reminder, you got graduation coming up next month, right? So. What's the date?
We don't have a date. We have the graduation date, the two fourth? Two fourth, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, I don't have any other, um, business. Uh, moving on to board statements of appreciation recognition, seven point oh one.
Just want to kind of echo what Dr. Terrell said. I should have assumed you would compliment and, or thank those for helping out, but I, I don't think we could say it enough. I, I participated a little bit on my end. I should have done much more, but when I was there, see the, to see the amount of work going into it, I mean, really amazing. Uh, the collective community effort and all the faces and many faces coming back and back and back again and helping. Um, I, I do want to mention that this referendum and all the work that's going into it, I hope the community, um, because I, I've, I've heard the feedback, what they're learning, the education that's taken place about, you know, the, the flaws in the state funding system, that I will say we all, all kind of agree with where we're at and, uh, what monies are used for what, and this doesn't buy that, this does buy this, and, um, that, the word is out there and people are talking, and I hope that there's a greater appreciation, not only for the referendum passing and, and getting that money, but that how necessary it is and actually how fiscally responsible the, the school, school system really is, because I, I think sometimes the perception versus reality is people could look and not really understand the reality when they see different events taking place, that they don't have the knowledge of where that money comes from and what the school's allowed to use and spend on. So, um, again, echoing your thoughts, thanks for, thank you for all the, everybody who's, um, contributed their time. It's, uh, very appreciated.
Uh, I'd like to thank, uh, Ms. Allen and, uh, the ambassador program. Uh, Mr. Smith couldn't make the, uh, final, uh, luncheon thing about two weeks ago, I think it was, uh, so I was here to kind of congratulate those individuals. We had nineteen or twenty-one? Nineteen, that's right, okay. Nineteen, uh, this time, so in two, three years now, it's like right at nineteen, fifteen, seventeen, right? Is that right? Nineteen, so fifty-one individuals now that are ambassadors for what we're trying, the message we're trying to get out as board members, administrators, on what goes on behind the scenes. So like Mr. Waring referred to, sometimes there's individuals that don't quite understand what takes place behind the scenes at a school corporation, in transportation, in finance, in, uh, uh, curriculum, in hiring process. And it's just a great process and idea that we started three years ago with the help of Ms. Allen and organizing it, and everybody else on the cabinet that's part of that, uh, to, to show those individuals that, hey, this is it. Hearing their comments, it's, it's Ms. Allen for the, or Dr. Terrell, to get up and say, what was your favorite part? And literally, like, they, like, are so grateful that they got to experience it, whether it been the part where they shadowed a principal at the building, or the knowledge behind the scenes with a certain department, whether it be transportation or that. It's just such, such a great program that I'm so glad we put it together. So I want to make sure, Ms. Allen, everybody else that's part of that program is acknowledged for the work put by, put behind that. Seven or eight training sessions? Seven. And those individuals in the community now that have gone through that and dedicated their time, have come into seven sessions to learn more about what's done. I think it's just great for that message to be portrayed out there in a truthful and honest way to where, we've mentioned this before, where you see stuff out there in the community on the Facebook sites or whatever about things being spread that aren't true. Now we have more, fifty of them, that are, if they're out there, can actually respond and say, you know what? What you're saying is not true. And to get the facts, here's what I learned, or here's the individual to find out what it is that's being done behind the scenes to make sure that issue or problem is fixed or corrected. So that's my thanks for this evening. Um, just a reminder, uh, did everybody get the invite for the, uh, our program with the businesses for the luncheon on May twenty-second? I can't make it this year, so I'm hoping somebody at least can. That's another great way to thank those community patrons that do those internships and help our students gather that wonderful experience and knowledge through where they might not know what field they want to go into, and they gain something in, whether it be nursing, or whether it be business or anything like that, to where they gain that aspect of hands-on learning of a business. So I just want to make sure somebody can make sure to tend to represent the board. Thank you.
Well said, Scott. Uh, I think just, uh, just a, um, little icing on the cake there with the ambassadors. I mean, I will say this, we are grateful for their help, and they are passionate. I mean, they're like an extension of the board and administration. They are out there. I hear them talking to people, seeing them. I see them wearing their shirts, their signs, so, um, just a huge addition. And as I say, knowledge is king. So we just appreciate all the work and the administration implementing that. I think you're seeing some of the fruit of, of the labor, uh, you know, coming fruition now. So, um, thank you.
Hey, they say imitation is the highest form of flattery, and we know of at least two other districts within our area here who are beginning to have similar programs, if not the exact same program with their people as well. So, yeah.
It's great. And, Ms. Allen, when are the applications up for ambassador program? Are they, they're open now? So individuals can apply? You'll be in contact with me? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bassler?
Uh, yeah, springtime, uh, April showers bring May flowers. And of course, May flowers bring pilgrims, but, um, nobody?
I got it.
Nobody? Okay, thank you. But just looking out the window here at the grass and the grounds, um, you can ima-, you know what it's like to keep up with your own property at this time of the year, mowing and edging and everything else under the sun to do with it. Uh, to keep up the grounds of all of our buildings, including the one we're at right now, is pretty impressive. Uh, appearance means everything, uh, coming up to a building, so I want to thank those people that are on those mowers and are spreading that mulch and whatever else they're doing. Thank you for that. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Jim.
Alright, so, um, I just have a quick statement today, um, shocker, but it is, uh, directed towards a large number of people. So it is our I learn testing time for anyone who has kids that are out there, making sure that they're getting to bed on time and that they have all of their, you know, their Chromebook is charged, and they have their headphones, and they have their snack. And I know my middle schoolers ask for peppermint candies or peppermint gum, and so I know there's a lot of work being done on the teacher's ends to make sure that everything, that the kids are as prepared as they can be. Um, thank you so much to our teachers. Thank you to all of our staff in the buildings who are helping. I know we've got interventionists who are pulling kids and doing small group testing. We have, um, just, I think about, I never taught in a testing grade level. Second grade was wonderful because it was before I had to do all of that, um, as far as like an I learn level test, but, um, I am sure that there's a lot of stress of making sure you're doing everything by the book, in the correct order and, and not having any mistakes there. So, um, beyond having to teach the kids and get them to the place that they are at this point, and then having them prepare to take the test and then executing everything, um, to our, our staff across the board in the buildings, I know the secretaries have had to be, um, and the administrative assistants have had to be so careful on not sending people down to the rooms when testing is happening. So this is really across the board, a full effort, um, so thank you to everyone, um, including obviously the students who are doing their very best, uh, last week and this week, hopefully as they get testing wrapped up.
Thank you, Ms. Bazin. I don't have anything to add. You guys covered it all tonight, so, well done. Would for a motion to adjourn? Moved by Mr. Angel, seconded by Ms. Bazin. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Vote carries five zero. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.